YouTube livestream is on, so the mic is hot.
Look at that thing. There's a report, I'm gonna make Tuesday, so.
Oh, report.
Yeah.
Uh. Alright. Do you want?
Okay.
Any thoughts or thoughts on Tuesday?
Yeah. I didn't know if you wanted anything tonight, but I can't make Tuesday, so.
Just some of you. What do you want to spend your time on?
Yeah, I'm working on the budget now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just got my hearing rights today.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Hey, you're still there, I'm out here.
I know, but we gotta make sure we're eligible. My system, all the people are good. That's correct. Right. So I'm working on that, too.
And you're, you're, you're all, everything?
Yep.
Um, did they have it all done last year?
Well, I don't know. They have one, come here, beyond the last couple of years. I don't know if they've been doing last year.
If you have trouble finding somebody, you know, probably makes it more. Uh, you know, the fire company's pretty small, but hopefully they might be able to do it.
Right.
Mostly that all the smaller over there.
It's going along.
Yes.
I'm a regular writer, there's five papers.
Um, that's where they work. I'm writing somebody there.
Oh, so.
He's a small guy out of where they, that doesn't work for Doug in him. He's really small.
But.
He's recently retired.
Okay.
Fantastic, so both are in the tax debt. Is that, we're covered in the tax debt. Oh, maybe, maybe before your old account, then that's what happened.
Not anywhere, anywhere else.
I guess, Grande people coming?
People coming?
Grande.
I've got work.
Cause I thought they were supposed to get more, uh.
You've not heard of work?
Yeah, cause when we said about all that electric stuff and then we were like.
I've got heard of work, probably, for severe. I think, um, I actually sent a, sent out the motion and we got one. At all? So, I mean, for a while, you can't go to work anymore.
Well, are you telling me that the over there, how these are, they can? I've had similar jobs. One of which is for, for, uh.
Folks, thanks for coming out this cold night tonight. For those of you who are unaware, we have a new book that's accessible by you at any time.
They enact the Robinson Review. They got a place for it.
And there's no need to file a right to know request to get any of that.
Yep, you know what I mean, cause it's part of the plan.
Later in the agenda, I don't know if you've seen the agenda, just posted on our website.
To make sure.
You'll hear us talk about a right to know process and the inherent problems that that kind of presents and calls to the township. It's a good idea, but sometimes what we're getting is bombarded, sometimes with right to know requests out of mine. The easiest information to access and many times being used for other purposes.
Fire company thing? This is the story. Yeah, I had this way before. Thank you. Isn't that cute, a match now, right?
We can probably all give a big shout out to the Twin Valley Football Team, how about it? Is that, is that a banner here with, I think congratulations for the coaching staff, the parents, the team, the school. Quite an accomplishment. If you haven't done so, you might wanna silence your phones as well. We've had a couple of occasions where they go off ringing crazily. Am that correct, Acting Chief?
That's correct.
Somebody take a pen pal.
Hey, will the head sign in, or? Alright, we'll call the Robson Township Board of Supervisors, we're coming, uh, December eleventh, to order at seven o'clock. We will first give a pledge of allegiance among the citizens from all military personnel.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, roll call, Mr. Delo. Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Bitler.
Yeah.
Alright, now, we have citizens' concerns. Now, if most people are here for the data center, we're gonna be talking about that in the later agenda, so if you wanna wait till that section?
Any possible possibility, Mr. Smith, we move that up? Is that, raise your hand if you're here to talk about data center. Any possibility we could move that up on the agenda for these folks?
Yeah.
Cold night, you might wanna get home.
Well, there's, is there any other citizens' concerns besides the data center?
It's under my section of report, too, so. I'll, I'll wait to the engineering report to, to consolidate that with my concern, I think. That might be best.
Alright, that sounds fine. Alright, well now, we'll jump to, on your agenda would be the supervisors' reports, the data center stuff. Uh, now, I know last month, we were given the coordinates of the Robinson Township Environment Advisory Council, um, design. Uh, I don't know what, how everybody wants to, if anybody has any thoughts on that, if it's been reviewed? And if anybody has thoughts on some of the sections of that ordinance?
Colin, have we received any kind of legal guidance on that? This was an environmental advisory committee kinda draft ordinance? Have your office seen that?
No, but I guess my question is, did the EAC base its ordinance off the one that we, that we, Brian and I had provide to the township?
Some components of it, yes.
Okay.
Some, well, I mean, there was some of that, some was the Penn Future, there was a bunch of different things that they intertwined, but part of it was what you provided.
So just for the, for the public's knowledge, Engineer Rhodes and I represent another municipality that directed us to prepare a data center ordinance, uh, which we did based upon a Penn Future template. It is, it is pretty extensive, um, Ryan's office and my office spent several months, um, putting that ordinance in an acceptable format, which we then provide not only to Robinson Township, but other municipalities, first county that we represent. Um, I don't, frankly, I don't know the status of the, of the EAC review, but we're happy to take, take a look and, and, um, continue that, that process. Ultimately, to, to enact that data center ordinance, it would be a zoning ordinance which requires, um, us to hold a public here and give notice.
Now, we, we also put that on our website, has anybody seen that? Has anybody checked, ma'am? Was it legible, you could see it?
It, it was tough to bring it up.
Okay, well, we're gonna work on that and try and get you as much information as soon as we can in the process.
Yeah, so just so you know, you can get the first page, you can see it very clearly, but to get the eleven, twelve, thirteen pages, whatever it is, it's hard to get all pages of the ordinance.
Well, we always have, we should always have a copy, too, available at our, you know, township offices and, you know, more information you get, the better.
Now, how many other people here have looked at the ordinance? I know you two, you two looked at it. You looked at it.
You looked at it. Yeah, can, can I say something to?
Well, well, actually, now that you're, uh, name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sally Stolmeyer, five King Fisher Drive. Um, so I just wanted to say that the ordinance that was developed by the EAC was based partially on the, the Penn ordinance.
Okay.
But what we tried to do was, um, do a wide survey of multiple municipalities within Pennsylvania, specifically Berks County, that were looking at data centers and ordinance that they were starting to develop and try to incorporate those along with studies that Penn State had done and other studies that are out there currently. So it's, it's more broad than just the, the Penn, um, ordinance that was developed, because again, we were trying to look at, at all aspects from a environmental standpoint.
Sure.
And, and if I can add to that, I think that there was certain.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, um, Kate, Kate Kennedy, seven twenty eighth Skooker Road, um, that there were parts in the, the Penn Future, um, that we felt that specific areas really needed to be identified as, for example, like noise. What I can hear versus like what my husband can hear, you know, is a very different thing. So it, you know, the decibels, whether or not that there's the decibels that you feel or the decibels that you hear, um, as well as setbacks and a lot of other things, that there were some very specific numbers. And as we're looking at these and learning more about other, um, municipalities that are dealing with, uh, data centers that may wanna come into their area, um, that we're learning more about the numbers of what they maybe should be. So there may be, I mean, this was set up as a draft, we're not lawyers, we're, you know, a bunch of people that are concerned citizens that said, let's, you know, cobble together as best we can as much information and put it together and submit it so that we could at least get this started, because the process really was to, to, um, look at it from a proactive standpoint, as opposed to after the fact, that it's kind of like, ah, I could've had a V eight kinda thing. So we don't wanna have one of those moments and we really wanna be able to be prepared so that we know when there is some proposal that, that we have a lot more information, um, and including benefits to the township, uh, and the community, um, as well as any kind of impact from an environmental standpoint, whether it's the water, whether it's the, um, the noise, um,
Electric.
And the electricity, so those were, um, part of our, our concerns.
Is there anybody out there from the data center? Anybody out there? Um, Engineer Rhodes, what, weren't they going to respond from last month to this month with some increased information on electric issues?
I have heard nothing from.
That's what, that's what they said before the meeting, too. They were supposed to, because that, that thing they gave us was not.
Emailed them and have received no response. Now, I emailed the, the development group, I didn't email the guy that was here, but I don't have his email address, but I've not got anything from that. I haven't, and I haven't talked to the owner of property either.
Yeah, nor have I.
Cause last I did talk to their engineer, he really didn't know a whole lot about what they were doing, other than they were interested in the property.
Yeah, cause they were gonna come because that email they gave us that had those deficiencies that we didn't understand, we were hoping they'd be here to explain.
So a cou- couple, other things to keep in mind about why the township is considering adopting a data, a data center ordinance. But mo- most importantly, um, in Pennsylvania, under zoning law, if a use is not regulated by the zoning ordinance, then it's allowed anywhere pursuant to that specific district's regulations, right? So currently, our zoning ordinance does not regulate the data centers, which means theoretically, it could be put anywhere in town so long as it met the R one district or the C one district or the I one district regulations.
Colin, isn't that, is that in lieu of our zoning ordinance, which indicates if we have not a permitted use, it goes into an industrial district? So we have provided for it.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
So our zoning ordinance covers that, I believe that's, comment is accurate, but our zoning ordinance covers that, I believe. So there is a place for them to be, just not in a residential. And I think that, that may have its origins in, uh, the Commonwealth's dislike of exclusionary zoning. You may not like certain uses in certain areas, so as a kind of a catchall, uh, we have a provision that says, and I believe it's light industrial or industrial is where that may end up. So they do have another avenue, if that's really what they intend.
If one of our comprehensive plan partners has a place for data center, doesn't that take us off the hook?
Because it's been. Not, not necessarily, because a comprehensive plan is not a zoning map or a zoning ordinance. A comprehensive plan adopted by the township or the county just sets forth essentially regional planning that does not really have any, uh, I'll say legally binding effect upon zoning or the use of land. So it's, it's.
But I think it's a significant consideration.
It's informative, it's informative, and I think it helps guide the county in its review, right? If a land development plan is submitted, it goes before not only the Township Planning Commission, but third party agencies like, uh, the Berks County Planning Commission, the Conservation District DEP, um, potentially PennDOT. And so, you know, the, the comprehensive plan, I think, colors, uh, essentially, very much so the, the review of the County Planning Commission, but it isn't necessarily, um, binding upon, uh, what uses can or cannot occur in town.
Now, our, our township adopted a comprehensive plan during my first term about twenty years ago. We're in that with Birdsboro, Union, Canarvin.
That's it.
That's it. And the idea was to, if we don't have a, a, a landfill in this, in our jurisdiction, but if Union does, then to some degree, we're, um, I don't wanna say exempted, but within our own plan, there is another use. It's kind of another layer of.
It gives us a better argument.
A, a better argument to deny that or to say your use can be somewhere else. And that has come in, come into play a few times, you know, in the last decade, at least been discussed.
The, the, the other topic I'll hit on briefly is with respect to electricity consumption. In Pennsylvania, municipalities are preempted basically from meaningfully regulating utilities like telecommunications, electric, um, gas, et cetera. Uh, the, the, the Public Utility Code, as interpreted by Pennsylvania's courts, has essentially said that, um, the Public Utility Commission ultimately has the final say about how electricity is, is produced and generated and distributed throughout the Commonwealth. Um, and that, and that is important because one of the, obviously, the big issues with a data center is not only the, the transmission of how to get the electricity there, but also how it's being produced, right? And one of the main concerns about this development throughout the country is that these data centers are sucking up so much energy from the independent producers that the, the demand has gone up, the supply remains the same, and therefore, everyone's costs go up, right? And so I think, uh, or believe that certain states are kind of evaluating whether to impose regulations that require data centers actually to have their own onsite or offsite electric, electricity generation. Because we heard here last month, um, from the developer, that they've reached out to the utility provider and the utility provider has said that it has, uh, capacity essentially if, if the developer upgrades the system. Right, so they talked, they, they talked a lot about how ultimately, they will have the ability to distribute power to this potential data center, but not necessarily, and, and didn't necessarily touch upon whether, uh, the, the, the generation of electricity will increase. And ultimately, that's not really something the township has a say over, because again, the Public Utilities Code and how Pennsylvania's courts have interpreted it, it's basically an issue led to the Utility Commission in Pennsylvania.
Stan Stolmeyer, five King Fisher Drive, what about water? I think water is actually more of an, an issue here than electricity.
So how, how does, is the township get its water from an authority or?
Ra- Rawa.
Ra- Rawa, okay, so.
The township itself doesn't really get its water from there, the line comes through the township.
Right, but in that, in that case, um, Rawa would have to issue the developer a will serve letter, meaning that they have sufficient capacity, right, to, to actually provide water to this.
Okay.
To, to this, uh, development.
Who is, who is overseeing this, PUC overseeing the water or?
No, right, Reading Area Water Authority.
Okay, so it's a smaller, less comprehensive oversight?
Correct, that's not, that's not a state agency, that's, that's a local municipal authority that provides water to a dozen or so, if not more municipalities in Berks County.
Okay, so the, the reality with the changing environment and the sometimes lack of rain, sometimes too much rain, it, it's a localized area and the ability to absorb extra use by the power plant we talked about last month, and this, in this area, could actually greatly diminish not only the water use of those in the township that do get from Rawa, but Birdsboro and everywhere along the side.
So, so.
It's bigger than our township, is what I'm getting.
It, it is, but let me, let me differentiate, okay, between electricity and let's say sewer and water, okay? Sewer and water is local, and if a developer goes to a sewer and water authority, like Reading Area Water Authority, and that authority says, oh, we don't have capacity, typically what happens is that the developer then has to, um, drill a well or increase the capacity at the sewer plant to accommodate the development at the developer's own cost.
And drilling well here is not what we wanna, we can tolerate. A lot of people's gonna go drive, they create wells and they fill that much water out of the system.
So, so for example, Rawa gets a lot of its water from, uh.
They go in the honey.
Right. So the, the, the well may not necessarily be drilled in town. It could be drilled somewhere that Rawa has, elsewhere that Rawa has a connection.
Oh, Rawa drills a lot of the desert, but if, I thought you were alluding to the company drilling well on site to where the, the data center?
No, that, no, 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 um, that'd be an, an online, an online system.
So, so we're actually kinda saying that.
I mean, this, this proj- this project, this project, you know, I'll defer to Engineer Rhodes, but I doubt this project can happen if they're trying to unlock water, right? They're, they're getting water from offsite, probably, you know, probably distributed to the site through Ra- Rawa's system.
Okay, so can we say in the ordinance that any use for excess water of this size must go through a organization like Rawa? As opposed to trying to develop their own?
So, as part of the land development process, right, you have to get a bunch of third party. Not only do you have to get approval from this board of supervisors, you need to get permits from those other third party agencies like Rawa or a sewer authority. And Rawa would only give that permit or that will serve letter if they actually have capacity, right? If, if not, again, it's typically the developer, you must make this improvement at your own cost, otherwise, we're not providing it.
Thank you.
Sure.
And that, I think, too, um, that's why, you know, within the draft that we, um, put together, it does say the applicant shall submit an analysis of raw water needs, groundwater or surface, surface water from either private or public sources indicating quantity of water required, because that's, I think that's really important, is that rather than it just be some vague number, um, or some, you know, we think this, um, to have specific numbers in place are really important.
Right, and we, we wanna, you know, I think one of the reasons for that type of provision in the ordinance is for us to understand the impact upon waters, so we can provide our comments and feedback to Rawa, which would probably ultimately make the decision.
Right, and that the applicant would have a water feasibility study to determine, um, how they would plan to have that water.
Right, right, exactly.
If Rawa, let's say, for example, doesn't have it.
Yeah, one other point, and I, I just wanna, you know, we talk a lot about electric generation, so from a power company, um, water that will come from Wa-wa, Ra-wa, sorry. And, but the other thing you have to consider is there is going to be, um, waste from that facility, um, which the township is gonna have to handle. So can the sewer plant handle waste that's gonna come off of that?
Well, again, so, so if the, if the, if the answer ultimately from the sewer engineer is no, we can't handle that flow per day, ultimately, it would be incumbent upon the developer to make the, the necessary, they're called capital improvements to the treatment plan. Otherwise, again, the sewer authority will not issue a will serve letter.
Well, and again, the ordinance tries to hit on that so that upfront, that's known to the township, so we're not being hit with that after the data center is built, and then the township has to accommodate the fact that there's, there's runoff and things that have to be done to improve the sewer.
Right.
I mean, again, that's what the ordinance is trying to get on. And again, the, the other thing I'll say about electric, so one thing that these facilities are doing, just so you know, um, and this is, this is done in other facilities that have already been developed, is that they are doing secondary generation of electric. So if their main electric goes out, they can sustain twenty-four hours, they have to do that. It is required, they'll do that.
And, and typically, how they do that is through backup generators, but I understand that's not the only option?
Correct. There are many options, actually.
But that, that is probably the most.
Glorified, uh, industrial power plants is really what they can become, because they have to have twenty-four seven power.
Correct.
So whether or not is that they've got some little combustion thing going there, fossil fuel, fracking, something or another, you know?
Wind generation.
There's a lot of that.
Solar, I mean, they can do many things in order to generate, but they must have backup. And again, I just wanna make sure that the township is aware of that and the ordinance starts to get on that, so that the township knows upfront to ask questions about that. so that the township knows upfront to ask questions about that.
Another question, name an address, please, name an address, please.
Is this public comment?
Oh, yeah, yeah, m- m- name an address, please.
Okay, I'm gonna stand up so I can see people in here. Um, I'm, uh, Dr. Claudia Bohoric, it's my husband, Dr. Jay Wesley Bohoric. We live up on, uh, High Sky Lane, uh, up over Cedar Hill. And, um, I'm almost getting the impression here that you guys are like, it's a done deal, and we just have to figure out the regulations. I'm here to voice my opposition to approval of this dat- data center. I'm not alone, there's others here, and everywhere I talk to people, they're without a question opposed to the data center being erected on this beautiful four hundred acre lot. Are we being bamboozled by false promises of jobs, increased tax revenues for the township and state, resulting in better schools, et cetera? It's all a smokescreen. Other communities nationwide are fighting the same thing, why is that? Why is it that the simple questions asked at previous meetings could not be answered about this project? Is it possible that developers are attempting to hide the real impact on our community and the environment? Anybody who does a quick Google search can see that the same fight over the adverse impacts of these massive data centers is being waged all over our country. Why is that? Why don't people want these huge centers in their backyards? The centers, the largest of which take up to a million square feet or the equivalent of seventeen football fields. Because of the huge needs for cooling and the machine, and the machinery in the data center, a single large data center can use up to five million gallons a day of water. That's equivalent to the water consumption of a town of fifty thousand people. Even a smaller center, center will impact the supply of water. I live up on Cedar Hill, we have an Artesian well that has barely sufficient amount of water. Other homes in the area have wells that tap into the same system too, into the same aquifer. Just because a data center will be over the hill doesn't mean the citizens are not gonna be impacted, um, by the, uh, lack of water. And you don't think the wells will go dry? Metta's data center in Georgia resulted in nearby residents' wells going dry. One deep well can drain an area of a quarter of a mile. These data centers can, can consume huge amounts of electricity, electricity needed for cooling. Meeting their needs will force electric companies to expand their ability to produce enough electricity to keep the machines running twenty-four seven. The processors can't stop or they'll melt down, basically, that's why they need water to cool them. When the electric companies have to expand their electric generating plants, who do you think pays for upgrading the power grid? It's not the data center companies or the companies they serve, it's us. We will see a huge increase in our electric bills, one conservative estimate is by twenty twenty-eight, bills will be increased by nearly twenty percent. New data centers that are planned in Virginia need forty gigawatts of extra power. That's three times of what that state currently produces. Where do they go to expand the power? Through relying on fossil fuels like coal, gas, and oil. Don't kid yourself and think there won't be an environmental impact, that the laws will protect us from the developers in Pennsylvania. The state of Pennsylvania wants to give waivers of environmental standards to these companies. So who are they really looking out for? They didn't care that residents in the area will have their health affected. Coltech and UC Riverside found that data centers in California were responsible for six hundred thousand asthma attacks. I'm a physician, this is not a lie. Emissions from these places spew out fine particulate matter, sulfur dioxide and nitro- nitrogen oxides. Another question is the water for these centers chemi- um, or chem- chemically treat the water for cooling. This water is unsafe to drink, and it's even unsafe for farming. Are we gonna see salamanders with two heads? It's happened. Another threat is to the electrical grid itself, outages, brownouts, this is for real. Erratic voltage spots, bites can damage household appliances and fi- or firewares. Are you prepared for the sight of huge voltage wires and towers that will go through the entire area, including the local towns? Oh, did I mention the noise again? The continuous noise add up to our quarry noise. What about the animals that call these four hundred acres your home? Wouldn't this community be better served by preserving this beautiful land? Why is it always some wealthy person behind these projects, look, um, looking to get even wealthier, doesn't give a damn about the impact on the community and environment? Who's looking out for the animals? There's a reason there are grassroots groups in twenty-eight states protesting against willy-nilly building of data centers. Many are being placed in locations where people are already living on the edge. Is that why they chose Robinson Township? Do they think we're a bunch of hillbillies who won't stand up to preserve a large chunk of their beautiful township? I would like to know why, when the residents are against.
Dr. Bohoric, respectfully, we have other business to adjust.
Six minutes, the two of us.
Can you please, so, grab your comments.
I'm on my last sense.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I wanna know why, when the residents are against a change in zoning, the zoning necessary in the project, why are these hearings continuing?
So I'll, I'll, I'll say just a couple of points in response. I think if you would have attended the board's meeting last month, this workshop meeting, you would have heard exactly the opposite, I think. We heard that the board has some very serious concerns that we convey to the developer.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I think you're mistaken on the fact that it's already approved, right, or?
Well, we're, we're, because the impression that you're working.
Cause I could tell you that there's, there's a, well, and I think your impression's wrong, cause I'm saying, there's a few of us up here, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but at least for me, that I, I'm not in favor of it, right? And, and, you know, obviously, we have to go through this process, but, um, you know, you're making it.
That I don't understand, everybody's against it.
Well, the thing is, it's not even on the, they're, the approved thing for that property is the five hundred homes.
Why was that also extended?
Well, the, well, because they, they're doing work on the prod- the, the property, so, but still, so that's the, the data centers, maybe they're, they're backup. So right now, there's an approved five hundred homes, they came to the, what, three meetings, just to see? So they really, they don't know really this is, is happening with the ordinance and everything else, that we're trying to be proactive. Um, that's, we wanted them here today because about some of the questions that might be happening, but they're not here, but, um, so this is not even close to approved, because if we do this, if the zoning's not even correct, because it's high density residential where that is now.
And, and I do wanna, wanna be clear, the project at that site cannot happen without a legislative resoning.
Meaning our legislative resoning, this board would have to do it.
Correct, correct, th- this board would need to amend its zoning ordinance in order to permit that project. And that would entail a public process where a, a hearing would be held and notice would be given.
Well, why don't you just say no to him, if you have to change the zoning and everybody's against it?
We, we, we can, we can.
Well, then why aren't you?
Well, they haven't even submitted a plan yet.
Right, I mean, there's no plans, there's nothing, it, it's.
They just have been in the top books.
Right. We don't have anything to shoot down right now.
But the, the point, the point is, we, ob- obviously, proper owners have rights too, even if we don't like what is proposed there. And we do have an obligation to at least, you know, treat them with good faith and keep it open mind, even if we don't like it.
Doug Metcalf, serendipity, as you know, I was here last time, my views hasn't changed. Um, we talked last time of, of the negative environmental impacts data centers have, the consumption of electricity, the consumption of water, the issues on the local community, this is a rural residential area. Um, and I understand that the board has a process, the Grande or Grand, whatever. Grande owns the land, they have the approval for five hundred houses, they brought forward some idea. You guys have to go through that process, and I understand that, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear from us. In the intervening time since the last time I stood up here, I've spoke to dozens of residents. And not surprisingly, there's not one person I've found that would support a data center in our township. I would like to commend the great work that our Environmental Advisory Council did, um, on the, uh, draft ordinance. I have read it thoroughly, it's a great document, I think it covers the major issues. I would encourage the board to adopt this ordinance. It would make everybody's life easier, yours included. Um, this ordinance really, um, covers most of those issues, um, it's very specific, and I think the board should focus on this before this folks even come back with another proposal. Um, so I, I would really ask the board to, to, um, you know, take a look at the ordinance and, um, try to get that passed sooner rather than later, cause I think that would just help, uh, the community, give us some assurance of where people are, where people stand and what's going on. And then finally, you know, I would just like to say that, I'm not sure if folks in this room are aware, there is a House Bill five oh two at the state level. Um, House Bill five oh two at the state level would strip local municipalities of control of energy infrastructure, and it would be given to a state panel. So I think everyone in this room could agree that HB five oh two would be bad for communities like ours. And we would have people in Harrisburg deciding what to do. So I would encourage everyone to contact their state elected officials and speak out against HB five oh two. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tom, I did email you the ordinance while we were talking.
Okay, great.
You can review it. Name an address, please.
Wes Bohoric, I'm a retired professor of biology, science education. And as you're talking, I have two thoughts occurred to me that might be useful. Uh, you mentioned a noise pollution being a problem with these, this data center. I've had a little experience with noise pollution. When I was a kid, not a kid, I was in my late teens, early twenties, my father had a coal mine. And we had a generator run by a diesel engine at that coal mine. Now, I've read about and have heard people talk about noise being a problem. You have no idea what noise can come out of the generator being run by a diesel engine. That machinery virtually screams at you. Now, we used to do hiking around the woods. Within three or four miles of that mine, we could always tell where we were, cause we could hear that generator running. Now, if you had that generator sitting here in your yard, the people in Birdsborough could hear it clearly, and the same thing down in Mount Penn. So I think that something should be considered, uh, seriously about, I think you had mentioned something about the, the, uh, company would be required to generate their own power. One of the types of generation would be generators run by diesel engines.
For, for industrial uses, there are noise, or, or, there's a lot of go above certain decibel.
Yeah, we have that, the EAC has that in the, in the proposed ordinance, and, uh, it's G section three or something.
Noise and vibration controlled noise from operations including cooling units and backup generators shall not exceed forty-five, uh, decibels or sixty DBCs at the property line, or joining any residential zone, being sunned down.
My apologies for being somewhat ignorant about the, the rules here.
No, 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 it's always.
I have one comment about water. I've heard different people talking about the availability of water and how this plant, if, if it should happen, would get water. My concern is what happens to the water after it goes through the plant? Nobody's talking about that. So one of the things that, uh, I read about that these plants will do is evaporate water in like a cooling tower. Now, if you talk about hundreds of thousands or even millions of gallons of water being evaporated, you know, wash Birdsborough away. You can create a rain shadow effect downwind from that cooling tower. You will find that the humidity and the, um, soil, the buildings, everything downwind from that cooling tower is susceptible to increased humidity from that evaporation. So I think that's something that you might wanna look into or at least consider in your deliberations.
And actually, I think some of that's in this ordinance too, there's air, ground, and water pollution controls that deal with visible emissions, particulate vaporous and gases emissions, hazardous air emissions, odor, um, glare and heat control, but yeah, there's some of that stuff's in there. So that was, that was stuff that they incorporated from, from stuff.
What's the scientific basis for the recommendations like the forty-five?
Well, that's in here too, where'd they get it from? I gotta go back to that section, that's from the, "Freshholds are consistent with the health-based guidelines established by the American National Standards Institute, the World Health Organization, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency." That's where they got those numbers from. Name an address, please.
Hi, Tom, I'm eight seventy-three, White Bear Road, Birdsborough, PA. Uh, just some things to consider. Uh, the track that they're proposing was set for five hundred houses that didn't come to fruition. Redding Area Water built a main from down seven twenty-four from Route ten to supply that development. That's where it was the original size of that plus capacity for extra usage. Since the development didn't go through, the only reason that the Burgeboro Power Plant is in existence is that the water that's coming down that main that isn't, that wasn't used for the development is now being evaporated in the cooling tower at Birdsborough to the rate, in full operation, of about eight million gallons a day. And that chews into about thirty percent of the capacity of the main that was brought down. Not only that, Birdsborough's water supply was inadequate to supply water to that proposed development. That's why Robinson Township worked with Redding Area Water to bring that main down in the first place. But working with Birdsborough and the power plant, Birdsborough is selling the water to the power plant that Redding Area Water brought down on that main. It was extended, um, from Cedar Hill Road into Birdsborough out of Jackson Street. But also, Birdsborough, uh, got a commitment that, that main is also a backup for the Birdsborough water system. So a good chunk of that capacity of that water line coming down, uh, seven twenty-four into Cedar Hill into Birdsborough is one, a third of it could be used by the power plant that exists on Birdsborough property on the old Armor Cast Plant. Second, there's, um, the pu- the, uh, track that the Armor Cast Plant was on is big enough to supply a second peaking plant if needed. So with the demand on the PMJ, PJM power grid, uh, if a nuclear plant goes down for recycling or refueling, uh, all these peaking plants come online to, to fill in the void. So eventually, I could see Birdsborough ending up with a second, uh, peaking plant on the old Armor Cast property that would take up to almost sixty percent of the capacity of the single feed that comes down from Route ten from Wa-wa. So any determination of water usage by the proposed, um, data center should take into account that there's a finite capacity and part of it's already allocated. And with the PJM power grid, um, running at almost peak capacity, they do have some, some spare, but it's being gobbled up daily. That means that that peaking second power plant could come to fruition, which would probably really curtail the amount of water that would be needed for that data center. That said, that data center would be fed by a single pipeline from Redding Area Water. The only way that, that, if they would have a problem with that main in either being inadequate in volume or additional growth in the area, that would take additional capacity away from it, they would have to build a second one, and that would go back to see if they could handle it at that subs- the, um, the towers that are off Route ten. The option to take water out of the Schuylkill River, I'm sure, is null and void because the peaking, peaking power plant could not get quench water. Neither could Limerick Power Station, because they're getting their quench water from the Point Pleasant pumping station on the Delaware. So all the water that's being evaporated. So all the water that's being evaporated into the air by the two power plants within six miles are from different sources than the Schuylkill River. So that's out. As far as the electric goes, you're going to have a single source of water with Wawa, which is questionable. Two, the amount of power that's being drawn is also going to be a single source. Since in their own substation, you and I on our electric bill, the first major part of that bill is generation. Second part, up to forty percent, is a distribution charge. That is that MedEd, the power company that handles this area, is adding a surcharge of the forty percent to maintain distribution, poles, electric, underground cables, distribution into the house. The electric that would be supplied to the data center would not have a distribution charge. Right off the bat, there would be no forty percent charge on their electric charges. With the volume that they're talking about, they will get a pretty good discount. And most of their going to be charged is probably a wheeling charge from the generation source to the point of their substation, which would be minimal.
All right.
It's just a couple of things to think.
That's more of the electric stuff. Now, anybody else, I mean, we've been talking about it for forty-five minutes. Anybody else, anything different?
No, I, can I ask a question? So I guess the question is, what's the process now? So the EAC has submitted to the board an ordinance for review and comment. What happens now?
Well, I would hope well now the legal team will look at it and discuss it again and see what needs to be tweaked and.
Yeah, so, so our offices will review the ordinance, provide any feedback that we have to the board. Once the ordinance is finalized, it needs to be reviewed by both the township and county planning commissions during a thirty-day period. Okay? Only thereafter can we advertise its possible enactment and a hold public hearing on whether to enact it, right? So this is, this is a zoning ordinance amendment, which require us to follow the guidelines in the U.S. Plan Code. And again, that requires pub, public notice and a public hearing to potentially amend the zoning ordinance. So there's a, there's a timeline to follow. And typical, typical zoning ordinance amendment, once it's finalized in a format that can be advertised in a paper, takes about sixty days.
One quick, Stan Stoller, one quick thing, I was just looking at some stuff while you guys were talking. The evaporation from a nuclear power plant is actually a very small amount of the amount of water that's actually used. And the whole point of the cooling tower is to cool the water down so they can put it back in the river. Now, I haven't heard anybody here talking much about cooling the water down. And I don't think they're talking about putting in a cooling tower to do that. So that is something else to be concerned about in the end.
We have in the back.
Jim Gellrich, one eighty-five, Blue Jay Drive, Rock Hall, Rock Hall Road. I, there was an answer earlier about enhancing the treatment plant and the question. And the answer was, well, the data center would have to flip the bill to enhance the treatment center. What happens after the enhancement's done and the data center has to be maintained and run? Who pays that bill?
The bill for the sewage or the?
The, the bill for the plant to maintain it, it's now bigger.
Oh, you mean our plant, our sewage plant? Well, some of that money would come from them and all the users of the facility.
So in other words, we'd be, we'd be supplementing their, they'd have a bigger sewage plant.
So, so to the extent that any sewer plant would need to be updated, they'd pay for the capital improvement for the, the plant upgrades. And then they would have to pay an EDU fee though. It's called equivalent dwelling unit fee, right? So there's, there's a number of gallons per day associated with flows into a treatment plant. And there is a dollar figure associated with each EDU that the developer would have to pay as basically an upfront cost to buy into the system to help the authority maintain the plant. So they would, they would be paying probably a capital improvements cost. They'd be paying a significant EDU fee. And then there's the, the usage fee that everyone pays when they use the sewer system.
Right now, that development currently is paying you EDU fees. Are they not out on five hundred units?
They, they own two hundred, some EDUs.
So they've been paying for something they haven't used for quite a while.
All right, any other unrelated citizens' concerns?
Well, it's not unrelated.
All right, well, one more.
I'm, I'm still, still back on if you guys had not extended that five hundred housing thing. You said because they're working on it. Now, that's kind of a weak excuse.
Yeah, well, that's what the policy is, right? I mean, I don't know, that's what.
Well, how long have they been there? Like twenty years or something?
But even if, so let's, even if we denied that plan, okay? Nothing would prevent them from filing a new land development plan for the exact same thing and picking up where they left off essentially.
Well, maybe we should do that because who wants five hundred houses down the road? Doing the same thing, tapping into sewer and yonder and.
I mean, that's, that's fair, but I think that property is also zoned for that use.
It is.
Well, it can change too, right?
Not, not without due process to the property owner. They would have a right to contest that.
Well, we should have a right to contest it too.
Okay, well, again, in order to accommodate any data center, the zoning ordinance would need to be amended. And you would at that point have some due process rights.
Okay, all right. I guess no correspondence, Harold?
Yes.
All right. Chief Brimby?
Good evening, board. The only update I have this month is for the hiring process. I don't know if you guys want to wait until the executive session or if you want to wait till now.
Does it need to be an executive?
Yeah.
All right, I'll wait until negative.
That's all happening.
Well, if anybody wants to leave, I guess we can give you a couple of seconds to head out if you want to.
Colleagues.
Thanks for coming, folks, and stay tuned, stay informed.
Tuesday. Yeah, it'll be on the, it'll be on the agenda. It'll be on the agenda.
There's no action planned, ma'am. There's nothing for this board to do other than.
It's, it's going to be on the agenda, but yeah, there's.
We have no action for it. There's nothing for us to take action.
Our next move is to hear from our solicitor. We're going to take a look at that ordinance. You're probably six months out for that, give or take. So stay tuned. You're entirely incorrect that anybody is, has some secret motive or has some, some deal was already made or some thought's already done. The opposite is.
Well, I just don't understand why, if everybody's against it, we're spinning our wheels, doing this study, that ordinance, and this and that.
There's a process we have to follow.
Where, where is that?
We, we have to give, we have to give the developer the opportunity to present the stuff. We can't just shut them down. They're working. That's what they're, they just started.
And that's why the EAC is being proactive. You're trying to be ahead of the game rather than, you know.
All right, what are we on next?
All right, finances, I guess that's all for, for review for.
I just want to mention on finances, A, A G Sew Report, if you've not looked at it, there's about fifteen on there that could be leaned. And which consider even more because several of them at the four forty mark now, that's a whole year behind. So you should just take a look at them for two secs.
Okay. All right, managers' comments.
My turn.
Yep.
So we, we have a resolution, somehow or another, all the appointment dates for the Gargertown area joint authority have become skewed. And we had a bunch of people ending on the same time. And when it, board was developed, it was supposed to be staggered years. So we have sat down and while I know it's not perfect, we have determined what the term limits have or the expiration dates for everybody has. And we'll be presenting a, a ordinance at the Gargertown meeting. They canceled last night, so we don't have that for the night. Rock Hollow Bridge, hmm, well, it's kind of sort of, but not really on schedule. So the bridge itself is pretty much done. The guardrails need to be put on and the approaches, the aprons, both need to be installed. The engineer has contacted Ryan and myself. And he is requesting that we allow them to get heated blankets for the earth on the approach of both sides so that they can do a really good job of putting the mechanism in. Because the earth is eleven degrees, did he said?
Eleven inches deep with frost, I think, which, yeah.
So later today, I guess it was, he come back and said, hey, listen, I'm willing to split the cost.
Yes, so here's, here's my take on it. Construction was rolling very well. They had great weather, you know, we had very little rain impacts. We were delayed for a number of reasons. We had the utility delay, we had the beam delay. None of those were necessarily of our doing, right? We went out of our way as the client to solve those problems. However, in the last week plus, we've started to hit some considerably cold weather. Bill has expressed concern over frost in, in the subbase and the ability to get compaction on the bridge approach. So his concern is, if we don't adequately address this, what we'll end up with is a settled approach. And we'll have, like we're all used to in Pennsylvania, going over the bump, that's the bridge, right? So if we want to maintain our schedule, which, which the contractor has been doing well with, Bill has advised them that you must either remove the soil that's of concern or remove the frost. The contractor told me today by phone that the cost comparison is not even close. You want to remove the frost as opposed to have us dig all this out and recompact everything to Bill's satisfaction. What I think Bill's second correspondence to us is, he, he would like to see this done. His concern is, is over frost. He believes that he can negotiate this to half of the original amount at least. And the original amount was about fifty-nine hundred dollars in rental for this equipment. And the balance to get to about eight thousand dollars in labor, installation, and transportation. So at the end of the day, Bill is telling us that he's encouraging the township to move forward with the blanket approach to, to try to remove the frost and keep the subsoil warm enough for compaction. And he believes he can get that between three and four thousand dollars. Other than that, we're generally on contracts for the entire thing as I understand.
Yeah, but I mean, and I don't know how deep and long the frost lasts, but we aren't going to hit a bunch of forty-degree days.
Yeah, I was going to say, what's the, what's the rate of frost going away?
Right, so, so that's, that's the question too, right? You're, you're in the valley. We've already discussed with the contractor, only installing the base course to open the bridge. They would come back then in spring, mill prep, install the true approaches in wearing course onto and off of the bridge. So yeah, those are all valid questions and we can certainly get back to you on this. The contractor is anxious to continue moving and they would love to.
So here's the seven day. It's going to be cold, but then if you go back, end of like mid of next week, now by the end of Wednesday, it's forty, and then forty-seven next Thursday, thirty at night. And there's still a bunch of cold at night, so I don't know what forty-seven during the day gets you.
I don't know.
Down there, not Monday.
So, so in a perfect world, minus a snow event over the weekend, they are planning to essentially be out of here Tuesday.
So they went to blanket tomorrow?
So no, there's no way they're going to get it tomorrow. They're going to, they would install it first thing Monday.
Yeah, so they're still debobiling out there, still tearing worms off and everything else, cleaning up. And they have a little bit of stonework would do each, each entrance and then it would be the paving. And then I have not heard the guardrail schedule yet, although I'm, I have told it is, it is on the schedule.
Once, once we have that schedule, once, once we know when the, the bridge rail and the approach rail is in, we will then convey that to the bridge inspector, the state bridge inspector, who must look at this before we open into traffic. And, you know, this can all happen in the next three weeks would be the goal.
So the question of the day is, do you guys want to authorize us, if necessary, to spend the four thousand dollars?
I mean, you have no choice, I guess. If you could predict the future, it's going to be fifty-five degrees or something and for two weeks, then you'd say no, but. Because you know what's going to happen. It's the elevator effect. Press the button, you go, go to the steps, a door opened, right? It's going to be the same thing. We order the blanket, it's going to get warm, we don't need it, right? Don't order the blanket, we need it.
I can tell you, you have nobody better than Harold leading this charge to manage this cost.
Anybody want to make a motion for that blanket for a maximum of four thousand dollars, not to exceed four thousand, if needed?
If necessary, yeah.
Anyone would like to make that much?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
All right, we'll second that.
We'll call Mr. Goho.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidler.
Yes.
Havo, yes.
And like I said, we'll only do it if necessary. Uh, the Allegheny Creek, uh, we, the debris was removed a couple of weeks ago. So it would be taken out off. Over road, so we got a report from Pendott regarding our comming. And we have several options. I will say none of them are great. Uh, one is to make it one-way. One, yeah, I didn't think that was an option myself. Uh, I'm thinking, oh yeah, the bus was a lot going up there, not being able to come back. Uh, the other is installing, installing speed cushions. And the other option is installing speed humps. Now, the speed humps that we found.
What about this temporary half closure?
That's the one-way.
That's the one-way.
Oh, you can't, it wouldn't be a stop sign where you, you do every other?
Yeah, no.
No? No.
So what we've found is each section of hump would cost us, I think it was three thousand dollars. You're supposed to put the humps in like every four and a feet. Now, the geographic boundaries up there won't even benefit you by doing that because like when you get to the hotel there, you know, you would just drive around. And, and then, you know, we're not supposed to install, you're not supposed to install the driveways, but I'm sure that people that live there won't mind if they're a little encroached on their driveway a little bit. My thoughts were to put them from the corner adjacent to Maple Street down to where they welcome the cipher sign is. Maple Street's the street on the other side. So we put them, if you're heading east, put them in the eastbound where the houses are. And then maybe be able to squeeze in one or two before you get to the bridge on that straight stretch.
So how many total is that?
Well, we didn't actually go out and measure it. I was actually drove it down today. And it, it would take quite a few. Ryan, I, I did, I did call Pendott to see whether I could get some assistance.
Yeah, right.
Well, hey, you know what? They're doing projects all the time. Somebody might just rip these things out.
They can't, they can't double as a heating blanket?
Well, if I could. So we, we are actually still pursuing that. They recommended that we get ahold of the local district.
Municipal services, right.
Yeah, and see whether he could provide some help. Because it is.
The verbal response on that was, we have a Pendott approved design, their liquid fuel's eligible, but he would have to look to see what other funding is available. So, you know, it's either pay to pave our streets or pay to put this in at that, at this moment. But he's going to, he said he'd double check.
Okay, and then like I said, if, if we have somebody out there had some used ones, we're not opposed, we're gonna drive over them anyway. All right, so maybe by Tuesday night, we'll have some greater detail on that and we can actually decide what you, what we wanna do there. Budget has been in the office for the last month for review, we can vote on that on Tuesday night. Then we have the resolutions that we had last month for the actuarial, actuarial smoothing of the pension plans. We have the non-uniform plan, the uniform plan and the. The other non-uniform plans, two non-uniform plans. So if anybody wants to make a motion to.
What numbers are they?
What numbers are they? Actual smoothing point for non-uniform is twenty seven.
Twenty five, twenty seven, alright.
The uniform is twenty eight.
Alright, anyone like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty five, twenty seven regarding the non-uniformed employees pension plan?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, we'll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Oh, yes, alright, how about resolution twenty five, twenty eight for the uniformed employees pension plan?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, I'll second, we'll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, now, um, we're gonna need signers for the pension plans. We don't need them tonight, but we need to think about who that's gonna be because you're gonna turn it, the, the signers will turn on a little punk in January the first. So we are gonna need some signers to put on there. People will be upset if we can't get any pensions paid out. There's a zoning hearing board coming up on the thirtieth, if the board would or would not like to make a recommendation.
We traditionally don't say anything unless it's a big deal, huh, or something?
Traditionally, we don't have an agreement also, there's an agreement that covers this issue, this is not the standard situation.
Well, we wanna make a recommendation or we wanna?
Have we reviewed our solicitors, have we as a board reviewed that?
Like the one from Joan?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments on that?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna be pulled up here, I mean.
If the board doesn't start protecting the integrity of its agreements and follow through with what it wishes, then. It's no good.
Alright, which day did she do that?
Do we know if that property's in compliance with that agreement now?
Well, her email was based on this, you know, she said, cause I mean, I don't know all the answers to what she put in here, if it's compliant with certain things, I mean, I would think.
So is it in compliance with the original agreement? And I think a land development plan would probably, as well as a subdivision, would probably be some of the considerations, so I believe we should. Take a position on that as a board.
I don't know what the status of everything is, like I said, with all these things, as she said, you know, these conditional things, I don't know the status, I honestly don't know the status of all that. Now, is that a minute now, but assume that's something the zoning hearing board would pay attention to?
Colin, what, what could you tell us about a special exception?
So, so a, a special exception is general, generally thought of as a use by right. Subject to reasonable regulations and conditions unless someone in opposition. Can basically show that the use proposed at that site would be more detrimental to the community. Than what would typically be expected of that use in general.
So this is really not a typically a, a, unilaterally a use situation, we had an agreement. And it doesn't seem to have been, I'll say followed.
Was a, was a special exception granted in the past for this property? What, 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 what agreement are you?
There is a written agreement with this board, as I understand, wasn't a copy provided, all of us?
That part of the email? I don't think so.
Mr. Steve, can you comment on this situation?
The agreement was in with the email.
What, Joan's email?
I don't know if Joan included it, but the email that I sent to hold.
So, so can you comment, Mr. Steve, you were on the board at the time, can you comment on this situation?
Well, I think that her, I think, and Bill, probably on this, this is what I think, uh, that she had a variance to begin with. So that she could have two dwellings on the same property.
Okay.
Subject to the agreement.
Yeah, and the, the agreement was yielded out of that variance.
Okay, so, so that, so as a condition of granting zone, we, she had to sign an agreement with the board supervisors, okay? And what did that agreement say?
That agreement said that you're supposed to remove the utilities among other things, and I don't believe it was supposed to be occupied. It seems to be a form of special treatment.
Okay.
Whereas other people are, are told they have to tear theirs down.
So. The, the obligations of that agreement have purportedly not been followed, is that?
We're not sure, but why would we change, why would we change our agreement?
In Joan's email, it says that, I guess it was supposed to be five years and then after five years, the original residents would have the utilities disconnected, so the property would not be used or marketed as two separate dwellings. And then she questioned, was that done, I don't know if that was done.
But we can determine that, the agreement allows us to inspect anytime.
And then, you know, she said the agreement was clear, the property was not to have two residents beyond June of two thousand nineteen. Then she says other things.
So is, is the purpose of the zoning relief application to use that second dwelling independently?
Yes, as a security. Yeah, it's supposed to be, request a special exception for security guard housing in a single family dwelling. And then it said, and then she said, it's not clear whether the single family dwelling was the original residence or the second residence, since there's two addresses. And then she gives a list of ten things that would be required to meet the special exception.
So if the board is concerned that the conditions of the agreement aren't being met, but we have a right to inspect under that agreement. Wouldn't we want the code officer to go take a look?
Absolutely, we would.
Yeah, you want, if, if that was the thing.
Scroll to the end of that application.
What, her email?
Well, I mean, you, you don't have the application.
Well, I, do you want, is it her email?
Uh, well, wherever the application, wherever you have the application.
Well, if that was in your, cause yeah, Joan doesn't have it in her email, if it was from you, alright, let me. Is that Friday's as well, Harold? Now that's the comming, where'd you do that, now there it is.
Gen- gener- generally speaking, the, the zoning hearing board would have the discretion to deny anyone's. Zoning relief application if, if existing code compliant, you know, problems persist at the property, it's.
And if it violates the agreement.
It's been, it's been longstanding precedent in Pennsylvania to that effect.
So which part do you want, Harold? I'm at the, I'm on the agreement.
Yeah, well, no, not the agreement.
Application.
Application.
Alright, you wanna go down to the bottom, or what do you want?
Okay, she, she lists there a whole bunch of things regarding the dwelling. She's had the safety tank pump, the plumbing upgraded ten years ago and a, I think, one tenant service or something like that.
So utilities have not been removed?
Well, I think that's what I take from that, I don't know.
The point, well, the point, the point is, we have time, we have another meeting before the next, or before the zoning hearing board proceeding happens. I think in fairness to the applicant, we should probably get more information before we make a decision.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you gotta figure out what is supposed to be done, is done.
If, if, if the, if the agreement says we have rights to inspect, we probably ought to authorize the zoning officer to go do that, so we have more information.
Alright, next thing I have is, I came across a green light go grant, which will permit us to upgrade our traffic lights.
Are we authorizing the zoning?
Yeah, we're gonna wait to see, well, well, the zoning officers should still go out before Tuesday to see.
Authorize and do so.
Yeah.
Within the agreement, it, 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 or itself authorizes it.
I don't, I don't think it hurts to make that motion anyway.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Alright, I second, we'll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, guy. Alright, green light go grant, uh, so we came across this grant and I talked to Ryan and. There's a lot of upgrades we could do to these things, which could run as much as five hundred grand.
Or more.
There's one way or the other, we're gonna have to do these, it, it's how you wanna suck it up. It's an eighty twenty grant, so if we are smart about it and. We get as much out of it as can and most we're gonna put into it is a hundred grand. I'm thinking we spent almost thirty grand on those lights this year alone, so it's kinda like nickel and dime on us and we can get. An eighty percent grant, I think it's a, a good move.
So you need a motion to pursue that grant?
We do need a motion to pursue the grant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second motion.
We'll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Millage rate.
Guess we'll.
What do we wanna do?
Guess we'll wait till Tuesday, right?
You know what, I got paperwork to do here and if, if the millage rate, you, you can either wait till Tuesday or do it today, I have the mic.
You say do it today, we've had this discussion before, I'm against, you're talking about raising taxes. You're talking about raising taxes.
No, regardless of whether we raise taxes or don't raise, we are required to set the millage rate, even if it remains the same.
So we can make a motion to keep the millage rate the same right now?
Three point two five.
Right, that's, that's my motion then, that, that gets that off the, off your agenda, correct?
It, it will, and that would be resolution.
I was gonna say, we gotta have a number there, right?
Twenty nine.
I'm making a motion for resolution twenty five, twenty nine to keep the existing millage rate at three point two five, that means no tax increase for the residents of Robinson.
I'll second a motion.
We'll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Alright, you guys, we're facing diminished returns.
We're facing diminishing returns and I think in the new year, I'll have some ideas on that.
Okay, uh, temporary staff, uh, we did hire temp to replace the worst who took a job, uh, better pay and closer home. His name is Brian Diaz, so if you are in the office, stop by, uh, say hello. We seem to be inundated with complaints at right to knows. It seems like somebody builds something and the neighbor decides that they have a right to know what they're building. Uh, you know, and it's just like, we could almost use a part-time person to do right to knows. Uh, but would accept any ideas on how to curtail us.
Colin?
There's, honestly, there's no curtailing them so long as, so long as the, the right to know law request is submitted by.
So what, what happens is, is you call in and they say, hey, my neighbor's building whatever.
Right.
We say, well, you, you, we can't give you that information, you know, whether it's a permit issue or not, so they fall out the right to know. Why don't we just give them the, hey, yeah, he's got a permit?
All municipalities handle the requests differently, um, they don't have to be necessarily handled through the formal right to know law process. I think that protects both parties, but that's, doesn't necessarily have to happen.
We, we don't have to tell them what the permits are or anything, but we can say, hey, yeah, he's got a permit to, to build.
Well, well, um, we should not necessarily be disclosing permit applications, but, but permits in general. Some of the contents of those permits are, are subject to disclosure.
I'm with the philosophy of, he has to post it in his window. Everybody in the world should know he's got the permit, what is the harm if I say, yes, he's got a permit?
Can you just state that there are the permit issued to that address, that residence and stop there? If that entails.
I mean.
Seven out of ten people that just.
Just they wanna know what it is.
Well, then, then.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, yeah, if it's.
Are you getting, did they get?
It is, it is basically essentially, essentially public information, I don't, I don't mind that, but nothing is preventing that person from submitting a right to know law. A right to know law.
I, I, I get that and, uh, uh, for sure, we make everybody post it in the witness, but nobody wants to walk up somebody's porch and see what you're building.
Well, they shouldn't, right, because it's private property.
Are you hearing, did they get a permit or what are they doing, what do you hear more?
A lot of it is that they have a permit.
So if you can say, yes, a permit was issued to the owner of that address.
Yeah, I think that's a form of information to disclose.
That cuts some people out that are.
Okay, um. I'm, I'm hoping to have the answer to the part of this next thing on Tuesday, uh, there's all kinds of QuickBooks specials going on right now. Uh, we are running on a, I think, an eight-year-old version of QuickBooks, which is no longer supported, so we need to upgrade. And the regular price for the upgrade is around six grand. It's a little bit more than the ones for the fire.
Little bit. Is there? Is there a Black Friday special you send?
Well, I, I, I'm looking. I may not get my Christmas done, shopping done, but I'm gonna get the townships done.
Did you explore the online cloud-based QuickBooks?
No, we, we do not wanna go there because, uh, there, there's issues with it, for security issues.
Okay, no, I was just.
Yeah, yeah, no, uh, so, uh, the next stop is where we'd like to stay. We got various positions open on various boards, uh, they're posted on the website if anybody's interested. Uh, the RFPs are, are out there, uh, I am. Our auditors called me, they signed a three-year deal with us, uh, they were very upset that we posted an RFP for the auditors. Uh, since we have a three-year deal, I said, if we made you a three-year, year deal, we'll, we'll, you know, meet our obligation.
Does anybody else recall that? I don't recall a three-year deal.
Yeah, I, I didn't get the paperwork and actually spells out each year what their charges are.
So it is.
It, it is there.
I don't recall that.
So, uh, having said that, I've made several calls to people that did auditing for us in the past. Nobody's doing this kind of auditing anymore, you know, they're just getting out of the business. It's too time consuming and there's more money in doing taxes, so. Alright, and now, there was an incident in May of twenty four.
Twenty four or five, yeah, five.
Twenty five, it says twenty five, it was twenty. Uh, whereas the road crew put in a one call for water dress, uh, went up to do the job and it was not marked. And subsequently dug up the cable, telephone and electric lines. And I have, uh, insurance company now wants to subdivide and they want us to pay and it is.
You said about three thousand dollars.
Oh, no, it went up.
It went up.
Yeah, that was, that was just for, um, the cable.
I mean, what's our obligations if it's not marked?
Eighteen inches leeway on the marking, the PA one cup, it's eighteen inches, how far off were they?
But it wasn't, it wasn't marked.
There wasn't.
So, so I, I guess, I guess, one of the carriers is saying we have liability because we shouldn't have dug, since it wasn't marked, is that? one of the carriers is saying we have liability because we shouldn't have dug, since it wasn't marked, is that?
Well, uh, no, I think it was marked, but not in an appropriate spot.
Oh, okay, so, so why, so how, how are, how do we have any liability?
That's, I think we're. Well, that, I don't, I wasn't here.
It's documentation.
So I don't know. And Joan's first question to me was, hey, did they take pictures before they started digging? And I'm here to tell you, if, if it were me, I wouldn't be out taking pictures before I started digging, digging unless something like this happened to me before. So, uh, Med Ed is looking for thirty seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And, hmm, I guess I don't have the one to fit me for, uh, the cable, but it's like twenty nine hundred dollars.
Have we s- sorry, have we submitted the claim through our carrier?
We have not. This, I just got this stuff. The, I, the one from Med Ed, I got.
What's, what's a deductible on our general liability insurance policy?
I think we're ten.
Ten thousand?
I think we are.
I, I don't know how we have any liability.
As someone who deals with this.
Well, wait, uh, so the question is just can, can you guys? Or do they wanna authorize you guys to change this?
You mean write a letter denying it?
Well, hold on, hold on. If they're saying we have liability and we refuse to pay, then the ball is there in their court to sue us, and if they sue us, then we just kick it to our
Okay.
insurance company. Does, or is this?
If that's what we're right up.
That's the status.
They're not, they're not gonna, they're not, they're not gonna sue us over four thou- four thousand dollars.
Okay.
I'll move on. That's the legal advice. That's the legal advice.
If that's just, yeah, okay.
It's the legal advice.
Looks like.
So legal counsel says that.
We hit stuff all the time in New Jersey.
Right, that, that's what they're, they're demanding we pay them four thousand dollars.
One, one is for, the other is for.
We collect fiber optic.
Yeah, I mean, again, I guess it's a little bit of a gamble. Um, but I think it's a risk worth, I mean, we, we can recalculate if they use to us. And, and try to settle at that point, um.
Yeah, we can see what happens, I guess, huh?
I, I could tell you my experience with Med Ed.
Which is what, they're litigious? Are you saying they're liti- litigious?
Uh, no, it was just the opposite.
Right, well, exactly.
I, I shoot that.
Well, I, I think that goes to my logic.
Hey, they were paying.
Say, say, have, have the, have the board authorize you to send a letter to Med Ed saying that we have no liability because you mismarked your spot.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll do it.
Roll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. All right, anything else? Harold and Colin.
You know what? I think I'm moving on up.
Anything besides we don't talk about the data centers? Anybody else any updates on the supervisor reports?
It's Tuesday.
And then.
Well, I did, I did get, uh, Jevol's fire report.
Well, he'll be back on Tuesday. And then we got minutes of reports to review for Tuesday.
Yep.
All right, Ryan.
Good evening. Um, a couple items, we're all covered here in my report. The first one is, uh, we got a plan before us, uh, the amended plan of record for Rockhollow Woods. Um, they are requesting a ninety-day time extension, um, by way of, of update. They did provide us an email and I'm aware that they've been working with Technicon. Uh, they have installed their ADA parking space as well as their accessibility, uh, uh, ramp. Um, and they are coordinating with, uh, Technicon on addressing some, uh, items that I believe arose during their, um, commercial building inspection. So, um, they are, they have made a lot of progress here very recently, and once that is complete and they have finalized their, their building permits and have their CO, they will be resubmitting this plan for our review.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve their ninety-day time extension?
In fact, they're making progress. I will do that. I'll second it.
Roll call Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Uh, the next item that I have is with respect to Green Hill Estates. Um, there has been ongoing, uh, dialogue regarding snow removal, um, and other during construction activities. And we have a resident here, uh, who I've been speaking with, uh, Michael Leclerc. I don't know if you're happy that you sat through this meeting to this point, I wish you would've gone first at this point, but, um, feel free to, uh, approach the board on, on what you have and then we can kinda go from there.
First of all, thank you guys very much for all of your time and effort.
What was your name again?
This is my first meeting. My name is Mike Leclerc. I'm at seventy-five Fifth Ridge Drive. We're in a new Ryan home development, uh, Green Hill Estates. So what I'm here tonight is, is to request some kind of clarification from, from you guys, the township, um, in regards to who is responsible at this point, uh, during construction, still under construction, for maintaining the roads and the other common facilities. Our declaration states that the common facilities remain the responsibility of the declarant, the developer until conveyance and completion. Uh, the developer, uh, on the other hand, has taken the position that the HOA should be paying for all of these, uh, common facilities maintenance items. Snow removal, landscaping, uh, the stormwater, facilities management, uh, and that interpretation conflicts with the declaration and the Uniform, uh, Plan Community Act. So what I'm asking for is not to step into an HOA dispute. Uh, our HOA is not even really set up yet. Our board is still declaring controlled, developer-controlled, even though they were to seat somebody on the board months ago, they haven't. I would like to know from your clarification or your confirmation of your own expectations from this developer, that the developer remains responsible for plowing and maintaining the roads until they are completed and conveyed, that stormwater systems must be maintained by the developer until they pass inspection, and the HOA cannot be expected to assume responsibility or fund the maintenance of developer-owned infrastructure before conveyance. So, a, a, a brief clarification from either, uh, Mr. McFarland or from, from Mr. Bitler or anybody else here would really help me out, understanding and moving forward, um, with our community, um, as we're set. We have a meeting, um, on the fifteenth to elect a board member, um, in this situation.
Is it straightforward enough to say it's the, it's the, it's the developer until?
Well, so, let, let me just speak for this and, and try to provide some background.
Cause dedicated, right?
And I, I appreciate the way that you've approached this. Uh, you, I, I understand what you're asking for.
Yep.
Um, there's a recorded agreement, uh, HOA agreement, um, which has been circulated. Uh, the board should have received it. I think it went out with my report. Um, and I'm certainly not an attorney. I do not pledge to be one, but I've read through this agreement and, uh, it describes common facilities and controlled facilities, um, and it goes on to talk about the purposes of the assess- assessments and, and the way that this should be administered and turned over from developer to, um, HOA. The interesting part to me is when it talks about common facilities, it talks about stormwater basins specifically. It talks about open spaces specifically and BMPs specifically. When it talks about controlled facilities, it really only mentions streetlights. Does not, doesn't mention streets. Keep in mind, this is a street network that is intended to be dedicated to the township. We, we on the plan said that should everything be built to our specifications and our satisfaction, we will take dedication to the streets. Then when it goes on to purposes of assessment, it mentions things limited to, uh, including but not limited to roadways, clubhouses, recreational facilities, open space areas, stormwater management facilities, and entrance signage. That mention of roadways seems to be what the developer in this case is, is hanging their hat on. Um, you, you know, as I read through this, I, I tend to believe, and this is as the engineer, not, you know, no legal representation here whatsoever. I think the term roadways was left in there inadvertently in that section. Um, it goes on to talk about maintenance obligations and never once in, under maintenance obligations is it talked about roadways again. Um, so again, this is a recorded document, you know, we circulated it. Colin's the attorney.
So, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, engineer Rhodes, the, the declaration is unclear with respect to what party assumes ongoing maintenance of the streets that are ultimately supposed to be dedicated. Is that correct?
Correct. No, it's, it's totally clear.
Um, so, okay, so what's, what's your understa- what's your understanding?
Okay, my understanding is that the declaren still owns the roads. The declaren still owns all open spaces and we cannot possibly be responsible for maintaining which we don't own. And that's right on the PA Plan Community Act.
Okay, all right. So traditionally, right, you have a declaration that, that's clear about when the common elements are supposed to be turned over from the developer.
And it is. It's clear in three point two that it's conveyed after the last unit is sold. It's, it's, it's specifically stated.
So do you believe that's hap- do you believe that's happened?
It hasn't. It's still being developed.
Right, oh, okay.
So it hasn't, the, the last unit has not been conveyed or sold, which is, it stipulates that's when.
So this fight is between you, your association, and your developer?
No.
Or your, the landowner?
What?
No.
Why, why not?
Because our association is definitely, it's, it's declaring controlled right now, so it's the, this is our, this is only my, my fight as a homeowner against the developer and the developer's HOA board that they've set up. So they have set it up and they did that incorrectly and improperly. They, they, they were supposed to set up after twelve units were sold. They were supposed to bring one of us onto the board, so this didn't happen. So there was no misappropriation of funds. So there was none of this going on. And, uh, be honest with you, this is not the first time this developer has pulled this. He has done this in other townships where he has not paid the snow removal contractor and the, the township had to step in. He has, they have misappropriated funds in another development last season where they paid tens of thousands of dollars out only to have to reimburse the HOA.
What, what, can I ask this question?
Yes.
What, what would you like the township to do?
Step in and send, send, send them a, uh, demand letter to, 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 to.
But it, but it's, but, but if, if.
The enforcement.
If the developer is saying the HOA needs to maintain the roads and the HOA is, HOA is saying the developer needs to maintain the roads.
The HOA is not saying that. You're, 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 you're kinda confusing this.
Okay.
The HOA is not saying, the HOA is, right now is saying that they have to maintain the roads. The dev- developer is saying that as the HOA. We have no say in this. The developer is, the developer and the HOA, they're both. So they are saying, yes, and, and I'm not arguing that the HOA is responsible for the roads. The HOA is responsible, absolutely. But it's declaring controlled, developer-controlled expenses. We can't, we can't, there, there, it, we do have some expenses of an HOA where we have to pay those things, insurance, stuff like that, but cer- certainly it doesn't call out in the declaration that we have to take care of declarant-controlled facilities.
Are you saying we as in the homeowners?
The homeowners, where the money, where the.
It's passed through.
Where the money goes through, where the costs are. Exactly. Only where the costs are, not we, the HOA. But the costs should come from the developer's expense account. They're, they're passing along this expense to us. We don't own it. We can't. It, 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 it triggers the Ultravires Act. Uh, you know that. It's right in the PA Plan Community. Fifty-three oh two and fifty-three twelve specifically say you cannot misappropriate funds for developer-owned property. It specifically says it, and it, even though it doesn't say it in the declaration, that does not supersede the PA Plan Community.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't that, doesn't that act give you a private clause of action as a homeowner, homeowner in that community?
No.
Can, can we put this back on the agenda for Tuesday and we can talk to our, our council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, you're.
This is the proper place.
No, you're fine.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry guys.
Need to see if we have.
Yeah. So Joan has researched this and she has talked to Joan's attorney. And.
He's the guy I argued with though. So Keith's the guy I argued with, that he's pulling, he's misinterpreting the entire.
Well, I, I just let him know what I, I, what I was told. And according to them and Joe, uh, the HOA is responsible for the maintenance. If they don't have enough money, then he's responsible. But according to him, whatever agreement he has, and I have not seen any of this, once they reach the twenty-five percent of the homes, I think, being sold on lots, then the HOA is responsible. Like I said, I won't tell you what was.
You're saying the HOA is not fully formed yet?
Not at all. They didn't even know. When we had a Zoom meeting with them, Twitter in terms, with Keith there, the, Joe and Ashley wouldn't even put their faces on there and didn't even know that they needed to have an executive board. So they sold the twelfth, the twenty-fifth percentile, they reached that in June. They should've set the board in April before the first home was sold. They should've put street signs up before the first home was sold. They didn't do any of these things. They are a, Joe and Ashley do not wanna be involved with our community. They don't wanna have anything to do with the board. They asked Keith directly in front of everybody else, okay, Keith, you'll be the third board member. Will you accept this? Keith flat out said, no, I didn't, I will not accept the nomination to this board. I don't wanna have anything to do with it. Then he goes on and says, well, I guess that's why you call me Captain Chaos. And that's Joe. That's the developer. It's Captain Chaos. And that's what we've got as a developer, and I, and I don't mean to make it sound funny, but it's just like. That's, then this, this guy, he's trying to pull.
Yeah, and it's.
Uh, you know, us into some, something that we shouldn't have to financially be obligated for, nor can we take control of it. It's beyond our responsibility.
Well, I guess Joan will, should get us more stuff for Tuesday.
So, Joan, Joan, if I look through my emails tomorrow, I'll try and forward to everybody what she did send, but I think she sent it to everybody to begin with. Uh, the other thing is they can't sell a hundred percent of the homes or the pro- the, the lots until the sewer plant's hooked up and running. So they're, they're like, got like ten to hold before they could do that.
And there's, there, it, it says completion and conveyance. We cannot, until completion and conveyance, how can we maintain something that's not completed? The roads aren't completed, the land, the, none of it's completed. Not, not one of those items is completed there. So.
Well, but the, but the township's role in that is holding financial security.
I know.
To make sure it is completed.
I know, I understand that. I know. But you're, you're also having problems too with them, you know, making payments to, paying their bills. So, you know, there's also that in, in regards. They're, they're not the type of people that wanna pay, that wanna make this. They wanna defer this, this. They wanna put obligations that they don't think. They've already misused seven thousand dollars of our funds as well. So we're concerned about that as, as a community, that they haven't set up this board in order to misuse funds, in order to do whatever they wanted to do, basically.
Has, has there been any winter maintenance to date?
No. Oh, what do you mean, like plowing?
Like plowing, sculpting?
No, they didn't do anything for the last. They hired Twin Valley, uh, I guess contracting and, um, again, but they're gonna assume that it's, it's okay to pay Twin Valley if they have to remove it with our funds. That's absolutely the position. I mean, Joe said it flat out. He said, I'll fire the management company we hired in the meeting. I'll collect all of your money and I'll pay whoever I wanna pay and you guys can sue me. And he wanted to put the fear of God in our homeowners.
Yeah, but, but, but for that.
And our homeowners, and you know what? Our homeowners got scared. They're like, well, that's, that's, we don't have the funds to fight that. And I thought, send a letter. Send a letter to the developer, you know, demanding that.
Yeah, but if, if a lawsuit is being threatened, why, why would we wanna take a side in that?
I'm not threatening a lawsuit. What, what they, what they, what he is, he's, he's saying, go ahead.
But, but, but inevitably, if we provide a position, we will be dragged into that lawsuit.
Absolutely, but you have to revise special. What's your land development plan today? What is it, what is the specification? What are your requirements for safety?
But the, but the, and you're free to come back Tuesday, but the board, but the board's involvement in the land development is to make sure that the public improvements are constructed and we hold financial security to that.
Right.
You know, if the declaration is unclear and that big picture, that's what it sounds like. It sounds like there is a dispute between the interpretation of the
Correct.
of the parties about the declaration.
Correct.
And respectfully, I don't know if we want to take a position because we don't wanna get dragged into a fight unnecessarily.
But, so, but, how, how do I get any kind of it, it, there's, okay, so there's, there's, there's a dispute in the interpretation. I understand that. But you have to have a position. There's no position from the township then? From, from their own solicitor? What the, what the, what the declaration, how you read this?
Because it, because it's a, it's a, arguing involving two private, two private parties. I don't know if we wanna be dragged into that fight, respect, respectfully.
Uh, I, 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 I'm not asking you to drag you into a fight, but I'm asking you for clarification on what your expectations are.
But if, but if we. We do not wanna give an opinion because this is not our fight. And I appreciate your, your frustration, but really we, we don't wanna get dragged into a lawsuit between you and the developer, between the homeowner and the developer. Between the homeowner and the developer.
And if that, if because you have an opinion, that would happen?
I, I, I think, yes, I think, I think that would happen because you, yeah, yes, I do.
How do I get, how do I get a, a, some kind of an interpretation of that having to go to a judge?
Do you have counsel?
Sure, but counsel has interpreted, Keith's interpreted one way, Ryan Holmes' counsel interpreted another way. You know, your, your engineer interprets another way, and, and another counselor interpreted it the way I saw.
I, I assume your attorney has advised you of your rights if you disagree with the developer.
No, not really, I don't really have any, I mean, I don't really ha, I don't really have any right, I can't go sue.
Yeah, but you just referenced the, the section, the Uniform Plan Communities Act that may give you rights, isn't that true?
It, it just, I know, I did refer to fifty-three oh-two and fifty-three twelve, but that's about HOA spending funds and developer misappropriating funds.
Right, so, so, so if you believe the developer is misappropriating funds, you may have a cause of action under that statute. That's something you should discuss with your attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I appreciate your frustration, I just don't know if it's a, it's a fight where we want to take a side.
I know, but I just, I, it, it's happening in your township, doesn't it?
I think our allegation stops at the planning and ensuring that the developer is doing everything we requested, this is kind of the agreement off our table. This is between you guys, hey, I'm not pushing it away.
No.
But we just can't go in and punch the table and say, we interpret it this way.
Okay.
When we didn't write it, we're not part of it, we're not named in it, we don't know what it looks like.
But you have to, you, you accepted it, so you accepted the legal document and it takes precedence over, over what's happening here, so if they said, if they said, we're not gonna hire a snow removal contractor and we said, well, we don't, we're not obligated, then what happens? And somebody, we can't get out, there's a foot of snow.
Roads have no bearing on us until dedicated, correct, that's private property.
They're private, they're private streets.
Private streets.
Okay, so you would have no, then just safety just thrown right out the window there, basically, for the residents that live there.
I think that could be addressed separately, if you come in after two snows and say, no one touched our roads, what the hell are we gonna do? We as a board could maybe make an emotion to send the road crew
Right.
and on the snow above six inches for safety.
But not about paying, not about who's.
Can't get in the middle of your fight unfortunately is what it is.
Okay, no, I, 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 I understand where you guys are, I, I'm not trying to pull the township in or anything of I've just seen what's happened before, you know, and I'm seeing what I read and kind of my interpretation here.
Unfortunately, I'm hearing that you as the homeowners need to obtain counsel and have them represent you.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I, we won't do that though, I, I, I don't think that the homeowners would want to do, you know.
But to your safety question, the township is not gonna let two foot of snow on your roads.
Right.
If, if that happens, that will be.
Well, I was just wondering, like, what, yeah, what if this happens, what are you guys gonna do then, so? Do you want to give like an explanation to me and my client?
No, no, no.
You have a look on your face like you might want to, and I just want, you know, to open it up, we can go talk off record.
As, as much as I would like to do that, I, I cannot.
Okay, but I, you know what, I would love to talk to you, I guess I can feel like this, this osmosis thing going on here where I want to mind meld with you right now and get it all in my head, because I'm not, I'm just a lowly paving contractor, so.
I did try to call Joe today, he has a couple of outstanding invoices, as well as he'd like a reduction in his bond. And he's never returned the executed portion of the bond.
It's not, you know, the, the non-answer is not to say that we don't have leverage, the leverage comes in the form of the money that we hold.
Yes, that, Brian explained that, it liked me when he came out and looked at another issue, so. Yeah, I understand that, and that's great, and I appreciate you having that leverage and discussing all of these things to hold them accountable for and I'll just have to suck it up and pay for the common expenses, I guess. I just, I feel like, man, I, I, I feel like I'm there, but I'm not, and I don't want to litigate. I really, I just wanted, I thought I could get enforcement.
Would there be any reason or proper reason to, the township provide, send a letter? That we understand that there's a disagreement over maintaining these streets and any safety?
Done that.
Issues, safety concerns, whether it's snow and ice, we're take, we're out, our liability is gone, can we at least send that little bump? Without forming, picking a side?
I mean, we could say, please work together.
Please work, well, you know what I'm saying though. Residents have, well, yeah, residents have brought a concern to our attention that involves their safety. If the roads are not maintained during snow, we're aware that there's a fistfight going on here in the background.
There is a contract.
We're just saying, reminding you, these are not dedicated roads, they're not our responsibility, you are both somehow responsible to ensure your resident's safety.
My, my understanding has changed somewhat here tonight, so, so you, you believe that a contractor will be mobilized to plow those roads? You're, you're just expense wise going to be levy of, of.
Correct, and that's always what it's been, it's just up until the point of conveyance and completion, up until that point, who has their responsibility here? And I, I still believe my, my, I, I, because you didn't dispute it, so, it's good, but, um, yeah, I don't think you need to, I, I wouldn't, I don't even, you don't need to send anything to them.
Take care of it?
They would probably look at it and, and laugh and say, yeah, let's get along and play nice.
And say, have fun, then we can re-discuss.
Again, the fifteenth, we have a meeting, so one person will be sent on there, it'll be me or two of my other guy, two other guys in the community, so that'll help. Um, and maybe we can move forward and, and figure it out, um, I, I, I don't think the residents are gonna like it too much, but we'll figure it out.
Thanks.
But thank you, no, thank you, I appreciate the, the back and forth.
You said that meeting's the fifteenth?
Yeah, the fifteenth, we have a meeting again with, uh, I guess the whole entire association.
Okay, so our next meeting's the sixteenth, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, I guess there's no reason for me to come there. Just throw you guys support, I will, I, I actually enjoy listening to the AI thing. Because I, my friends own property right across the street from Limerick, so that's a huge thing over there. Limerick just passed a hundred and twenty foot high, they're gonna put a huge data center there, they're gonna put another, a third reactor in. They're supposed to put in all this infrastructure there, so that was very interesting.
All right, yeah, thank you.
No, but thank you, thank you for all your work too, thank you guys.
Uh, next item I have for the board, we have received payment application number two for Rob Haller of Bridge. This is, has nothing to do with the change order item that we discussed earlier, this is for work completed to date. Uh, payment application number two is requested in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, that has been reviewed by, uh, Whit, Mr. Whitman's office, and I've discussed it with them, we're recommending that the board consider payment of application number two.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I would make that motion.
Was that two, three, seven, two, four, three, four, five?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I'll snag it, roll call Mr. Golo.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
I'll go, yes.
Thank you, um, finally, the board had authorized, uh, advertising of the twenty-twenty-six street work. I had to push those dates, we were having trouble getting, um, uh, verification from Union on exactly the scope of work. They wanted it included in the bid, we have verified that, the first advertisement took place, uh, today. Um, so they are out for bid, I will have them, uh, for you in January. Um, again, that's a maintenance contract with Brechnoch, Robinson, and Union, as well as our own paving contract. They are all out now, uh, for bid, and I will have those results for you in January. That's all I have, uh, one quick follow-up item on the green light go that Harold discussed. Um, we have asked a consultant of ours to go out and inventory what's in these lights. I've spoken with Penn Dot Signal Unit, they believe that the project is, is a strong candidate for funding. Um, so we won't be putting that together, that application is due the third, I believe. Um, so we will get, it's, it's a quick two pager, uh, with a quick cost estimate, we'll get that in and hopefully, uh, know within a month or so after that where we're following their funding, so, uh, that's the.
What about Green Hills Lake, did you see any update on?
I, you know, I reached out to the engineer, I didn't hear back, um, I'll, I'll do that again, but you give me for the dam inspection, yeah, I'll follow up again.
Can I ask a question, this discussion about the traffic signals, could that possibly include turning on the left turn signal over Gibraltar, please?
It could possibly include that, however, Penda has some very stringent requirements to do that. And I don't think we'll meet them, but we're gonna try.
I mean, the traffic that backs up there is just unbelievable.
One, one of the things, one of the things I was pushing for was an extended green coming east.
Yes.
And even if we don't have the turnout, it will let you dump all that traffic out there, but, uh, you, you know, we, we had to have the signals retimed, uh, maybe two months ago, and you wouldn't believe the trouble I went through to get that done.
For a stuck button.
What's that?
For a stuck button.
For a stuck button, yeah.
That's all that caused this problem.
There's, there's a number of things that play into that, we have to meet the left turn warrants, uh, number one. Um, one of the other items that's been brought up in discussion as part of this is um, essentially, when there's a problem on one seventy-six or four twenty-two, what we see is extreme backup at this location. Uh, there could be something that would hook into Penn Dot's regional system, or maybe even connect to the township office or the police office that says, hey, we're experiencing an unusual event, and as the light goes into a, a special mode, runs for a certain period of time and then comes out. To try to move that traffic, is it, that's, that's what we're saying.
Well, the other thing is when we get a camera person loops, so the cameras will, will see the cars there, which is somebody not stopping on the loop. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of upgrades, we're gonna look into Opticon, so the emergency vehicles can get through in, in the event they can just dump the traffic out, so there's, there's a lot of things to look at.
There's, there's a number of stipulations on the grant, only twenty percent can go towards preemption. Um, only so much can go towards signal timing, so what's gonna drive this is the cost of our infrastructure upgrades. And what do we want, what kind of bill do we want to foot, what's our twenty percent look like at that? So, so we're gonna try to maximize that and see what Penn Dot comes back to us with, and this will be an ongoing discussion.
Um, one of the things that we did have on here, you know, this is, uh, Oak Grove, not Oak Grove, Oak Grove. The gate at Oak Grove, we've gotten a lot of complaints about that gate not being there, and there are people who are moving the rocks. Driving through driveways and, you know, the whole bit, so we are supposed to have a meeting out there.
I don't know if it was ever confirmed, but yes, we did circulate this, we, we are trying to work with the developer to bring some resolution.
My thoughts are, he needs to put the gate in there, what was supposed to be there, and, uh, right now, we can't even get emergency vehicles through there. So I don't care, but I, I would prefer they hook up the automatic, right away, but if you can't do that, candelier gate, you can give, give it keys and, you know, you can at least open it then.
Quick question, uh, did the traffic light ever get integrated with the railroad crossing? That was discussion years ago.
I don't believe that, I don't think that light is, Tom.
Did it, did it ever happen?
And, and part of, part of it is.
Worried about cars being across the railroad intersection with a train coming with the traffic light not allowing them to go.
So, uh, you say that, and just yesterday, I went out there, going to bridge and way back, there's some idiot parked on the tracks waiting for the light to shake.
Well, that, that came up when I was manager and we were looking into it when I left about integrating the, the traffic light with the railroad crossing to make sure that incident would never happen.
There, and, and there's a number of restrictions based upon the current electric out there, the, the, you know, the way those signals communicate. So that's what we're looking at, the cost of upgrading all of that so we can incorporate these.
Well, since you're upgrading, I thought I reme, I remembered that that issue came up when I was manager of the township. And it never really came to fruition, and I just thought maybe it would be a good opportunity to look and see if that could be done while you're doing the other things.
Anything else, Ryan?
That's all I have.
All right, Colin.
Pursuant to the board's direction at the last month's workshop meeting, I prepared an ordinance that allows the township or supervisors to set all these by-revenue. So if the ordinance is acceptable, I would want a motion to authorize my office to advertise that ordinance in the Red Eagle for enactment either at next month's workshop or general meeting.
We can do that Tuesday, correct?
Uh, no, because an ordinance, I believe, needs to be advertised for at least seven days.
You're saying we have to do it tonight? So you're saying we have to do it tonight or next month?
You can wait to authorize advertisements on Tuesday, yes.
I just want to read it again.
Sure.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
All right, I guess we do public works Tuesday, all right, parking wreck, there's minutes, and I guess, Harold, I guess there's a they would like a motion to purchase and install gutters and downscouts for the Gibraltar Park main building pavilion not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars from line item code four, five, two point two eight one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call Mr. Golo.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
I will guess. EAC, Kate, you want to say anything?
Um, I did have, we had, uh, two people since the last, um, meeting, uh, that had requested, um, filling in, uh, open positions, and they both had formally put something in writing, it was sent to the, to the office. Um, and so I'm not sure, we're, we're, what do we do?
Do you know if Paula got that, Harold?
Well, Paula has the list, uh, do, have to wait till January, see who all applies and they'll appoint at the, uh,
Reorganization?
Reorganization.
Oh, okay, 'cause there's open positions now, so we still wait until January?
Yeah, yes.
Because, I'm sorry, I'm trying.
We'd have to redo it in January. Well, or, well, I guess you could do it now if you really wanted to, but we're so close to being able to do it in January, you have a meeting between now and?
We do not, naturally, we do not have a meeting in January.
We also want to see who else applies for these different boards and stuff. So I think we're gonna give it to the end of the year, in my opinion.
Uh, okay, so that's.
Not just EAC, any, all boards, all, all things.
Okay.
So Paul did get the two from EAC, Harold? Paul did get the two?
Yeah, she did get some obligations.
All right, and so, so then the position then is that we don't have a meeting, but it would be the next meeting of the board supervisors, of when you would look at all of the open positions across, whether it's parks and.
Reorg.
Reorganization, yeah.
And, and when is that scheduled?
January.
January fifth.
Fifth, yeah.
January fifth, okay, thank you. And then my second, I, one other question, has anybody read the draft that we submitted of that ordinance?
You mean on the board, us?
Yes, anybody on the board, I'm sorry, yes, did anybody in the board read the draft that we submitted, okay, one, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was, it seemed to me to be a combination of a couple of things, there's a few areas of concerns I have.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I think, you know, I'll wait to see what our legal team says, and then, you know, the biggest thing that I feel is there's too many things left to go, cans kicked down the road, and this isn't one that, you know, we don't, we won't do that, so we want to move it forward.
Right, but that's what I was, I was kind of like wondering who had read it and then, you know, when your comment said that, you know, it'll take six months for their.
Well, there's other, no, there's other requirements, meaning advertising, all kind of stuff.
Well, that's, that's a whole different thing though, I mean, that's, that's after the fact, so giving six months for them to get back.
That's part of the fact, it won't be given six months, we backed us in a few.
Then I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, no, the whole process till something can be enacted, an ordinance like that, is, six months is probably pretty reasonable.
Sixty days, isn't it?
I said, I, I said sixty days from the time that the ordinance is.
Right, you said sixty days, but what, uh, Mr. Bittler had said, he said six months for you guys to get back to.
No, no.
That was my understanding.
They wouldn't be working for this board if it takes six months. How's that?
That's fine, and I'll just, uh, change my, my notes because I wrote lawyers to review and submit ideas to review per Bittler, this is six months.
Well, as a, as a seg, as a segue, does the board want to direct my office and Ryan's office to review the EAC ordinance and provide feedback?
Well, essentially, it takes, it really takes a look at what else is in the rest of the ordinance that covers this construction. Because as I recall, the only reason Rob and I got that line data is they could not, between the wells that they dug and Burbsboro, could not supply an adequate water supply to the residents and a fire. I fail to believe that with the amount of work that everybody's saying, it seems to take, they could ever meet the qualifications already there. So I, I, I would caution that, go put something in there that's lighter than what we have now.
It still should review it, I think.
Well, yeah, we gotta, we gotta review that, so I'll, I'll make a motion that you, you review that as soon as possible.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
That clarify that?
Thank you, I shared it, yes.
In your, in your review, um, you should check with the Burrsboro Water Authority on what they have committed back to them from Ra'waw about backing up the Burrsboro Water Authority.
Okay, but, but I just, I just want to be clear. The, the water issues are entirely independent upon any zoning regulations that we would impose. Okay, now, now, in the, in the zoning ordinance, the data center ordinance, we can refer hydrological and other studies that can maybe inform our opinion, but ultimately, the, 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 the water issues are separate from the zoning ordinance amendment.
Okay.
Right, we're not, we're not, we're not setting, not setting water standards in the data center ordinance.
Correct. Agreed.
But can you set the standard that they cannot drill wells to support it?
There, there's already wells there.
Yeah, there's already wells there.
Any further wells, but we, we-
Well, just to see what's in, we'll see what's in there, you know.
We, that, so that, so the, the placement of wells is governed by DEP regulations, but also, also our land development ordinance, right?
Yeah, to, to a very limited effect. But, but that, that's a, that's a property that's served by public water, so, you know, the, I highly doubt they're going to put a well on that property to sustain a, a use like this.
They couldn't drill enough wells to get the water that they, that they needed, right? The only, the only way the data center will have water is through, through public water, not online.
All I'm suggesting is that we try to dissuade them from even attempting, even if they were to drill wells to augment water from Ra'waw, it would still hurt the residents' water supplies.
I, I, I see, I see the point. And that, that's why the data center ordinance requires, I think, again, hydrological studies to that effect.
I do want to caution, so you don't want to look at the ordinance from the standpoint of what you think the proposal is going to be for an existing property. The ordinance should cover every, the entire township.
Sure.
Right? So we keep talking about one piece of property. I mean, somebody could come and, and propose a data center somewhere else.
Cover the area, the zoning map, and potentially might want to allow it, as opposed to the residential zone that we're talking about.
And the ordinance that, that was proposed tries to cover anywhere that a data center would be built. So they could drill a well somewhere else, depending, depending on what the zoning is for that particular.
Good.
I guess no, find a new business, and then anything else with the other, before we go to executive? All right, and then we go to the executive, it will go to executive nine zero three. Regarding personnel issue.
Can I get you to sign two pieces of paper before you go behind that post door? Um, I'll fill everything up. Owner. So, right there. Some new ones for putting up.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, if you want to write some, too, and then we can just kind of collaborate with you.
I have to.
No, not just tonight.
So you know the, uh, DA attorney general's office?
Yes.
Not, yeah, not DA, DA, right, all right.
So, so here's what I can tell you.
I don't, I don't, I, true, I don't really answer, I don't really answer.
Could you look up the name?
I can't, I can't.
It takes ten years.
He can't, he's got annual account.
Okay, okay.
It's nice meeting you, too. Good luck.
Especially if he decides to, if he does that, it would be like a disaster. You have to get your own legal.
Yeah, that, then, that's what's wrong.
Their wells are very specific. Primarily allow data centers, not only doesn't think, this is not this is not the point. Your concern is that you're paying your homeowners fees, and they're using it to- I couldn't read that.
It is pretty small, though.
See, that's a, cool, because, thanks to that representation, I think, did that.
So what, are you expecting to not be paying homeowners fee until the board is just hoping to get clearly defined?
And I don't, I don't disagree, I just, I don't think that's how it is.
First, not always. If you, if you're really, I just don't want you to go, good, attorney general's office. Do that, fuck.
I lived here and all this stuff, that was good. It was really good. The data centers like you.
You know, it, it's very scary, because we spent thirty-six years here, a downtown face.
Thanks for remembering.
I'm not, that was for the, you know. But I, I, I hear, and those, they're fatal.
And we're going, you know, the length of the football field is long.
Thank you. It was very informative.
I hope so.
Wonderful. I didn't get what I, no, I feel like I'm like further behind. I didn't keep it by you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. You know what it is?
It's federal, exactly. But they may not do it this year, next year, or a year.
You're right, get the ordinance in. Get it in, but I'm telling you, they're not going to do it. There's, there's too many other places that are better for a data center.
You know what?
That piece of, that piece of land is, it doesn't suit for that. They're just throwing ideas out.
Instant wisdom, decided that we weren't in a flood zone.
All right, hey, thank you so much. Good luck. Sounds like we're in a lot of love.
Yeah, so we didn't have it, it saved a couple thousand dollars for a couple of years.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I'm saying I have eleven percent to be renewed, but the new board coming in will probably not want to hear. Come on, somebody's got to come to planning station, baby.
Yeah, I can come, I can come as a resident. You can always come. Yeah. Because I got a-
You need flood insurance.
Yeah.
Like, you never see the flood, ever.
Right, right, I know. Yeah, my house was built in seventeen forty. You know, the people next door at Agnes were like, get a rescue from the second floor of my house. Like, so.
And then I had the guy who put in, he never came doing any, oh, yeah, and he resigned. But they could be back in with their win, that'd be good.
And it's kind of crazy stuff.
But the judge, and he lasted for a month before he was laid down.
We're, 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 we're trying, we're trying to be proactive, and then, you know, you know, it's a little private community and stuff going on, I mean, there's I got people from, you know, Connaughton, West Vincent, I mean, we've all had all kinds of-
They can't be knocking on the door during training.
These are people that will come here and be, you know,
Have a good night.
Doctorates and stuff, and experts, so, you know, it's like something that, you know, but.
Yeah, it's good to be proactive and not reactive.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to do. It's like, you know, like, hey, we hear this is going on, it's like, well, let's try and be proactive. What we do, yeah, there's this house built, there's also like, you know, that, that, we're not, we're also like, you know, do it across the entire country. I'm not sure how that's going to go either, you know.
I failed to my mouth and put actual numbers and things, you know, even having a generalities, do this, do that.
Well, your stuff has to do specifically with that space, and so, and that one thing, so the ordinance, though, has to go overall, but that gives, you know.
If you go back, my word, look up at the Hill, Meddick is rubbing their palms together.
Obviously, excuse me, pal.
See ya, thank you, Dan, you too.
I'm helping brown out the uh Pennsylvania Jersey Delaware progress.
It wasn't loud enough, so I bumped it up, and I could see, I changed, yeah, that, that was like a setting.
My mom said it sounded good.
It's like, okay, well, what do we do with this?
I'm going to start a podcast with that mic.
Well, the right, it's here, and then eventually we'll send it to Tom and his folks at the planning commission, and we'll sort of work it back through. You, you know, that, that's, that's the process.
Okay.
Um, you guys just believe.
I was like in the commentary of that fire fall, and they're like, if anybody wants to-
Yeah, given all the things we've had, it's too bad other places haven't done this, so.
Well, the point is, it can, it can be done, but you've got to put the effort into, to do it, okay? And, and that's, I think that's the concern is, if you're going to put something, make it as energy efficient possible.
Yeah.
Make it as water conscious as possible, noise as possible. Uh, and if you don't do what they're doing, they can just come in, and if the board's not made aware of it, and I'm sure you're probably more aware than most of what they are, of the different aspects of it, the slip under, that's what they're trying to determine.
Yeah, yeah, no, completely understand. Um, the, the, my two, the attorney and myself, we don't just grab things and go on this, they say, we're going to-
I, I, I understand, I'm sitting back there, you know, I'm sorry, the guy's, the guy's first name, people, our house, you need to pay homeowners. That's money supposed to go to taking care of the real place, and how they develop, because it just, it's got that, I don't know what it's going to be.
Sorry, like, our first was transported today, so it's so high. We're using like the first people.
All right, well, you guys have a good night.
You too.
I know, you're just, you're just, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, so, I, I first, the first property I wanted to, I gave one thing, I, I paid for a lawyer. Okay, so I changed the interest rates. So I turned to the lawyer, I said, what, what are you going to do about this? He said, what do you mean, I'm, I'm your lawyer. No, you're my lawyer, I'm paying to, no, you're paying me to, to represent them. I had no lawyer, I had none. He said, I can't really do this, but just go on signing, if, if they, if the interest rate ever goes up high enough, then get a lawyer and go somewhere. Otherwise, you're not going to get your house.
Yep, it's already, which, which is, when you show up, when you show up on site, it's already done.
Which he did, he did what Colin couldn't do, which the right thing is, I can't tell you this, but he did.
I'm not sure, I'm Tuesday, I mean, I can come Tuesday, but I just don't want to see another thing like this again.
Well, and I don't know whether there's a point, if, because they've now got the action to renew the ordinance. Well, we were wondering whether we need to come again on Tuesday, because I don't know that we really have.
I don't think, we're not going to have any turnaround for Tuesday. So here, here's what I would, here, here's what I would recommend to you guys. As, as members of the EAC, I would wait until this board sends it to our planning commission, and then come to that meeting. Those are the guys that are going to tear it apart and read through everything, and that, that's where-
Okay, so let me ask a silly question, because I, the reason I ended up with the EAC was because I couldn't find out. Now, how do we find out when the planning commission is going to be reviewing our ordinance?
Lots of the agendas are posted. They, they meet on the first Monday of every month, when there's an agenda item, so if there's subdivision-
So it will say, you get state ordinance or something like that, or data center, or data center, or whatever.
Or, and, 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 to let you know. It's, it, it, you know.
But that's what's going to happen until when, and that'll just be the, I don't know, is there somebody new coming in?
Well, you know, uh, uh, Paula at the office, feel free to call the office and, and just ask. Um, again, they meet, when there's an agenda, they meet the first Monday of every month, and if you really want to know what's going on, that's the place to go. That's where all subdivision plans are reviewed, all, yes, all redevelopment plans are, all ordinances, it all goes through there. Um, you know, and, and not, not an op on the EAC, but the, the planning commission is the first body that usually gets these things.
Oh, but it won't, are there any spots on the planning commission that might ask?
Well, ask, you may ask, it's, it's-
I, I think I'm going to be turned down, so I guess I'll go with that.
I, I will say this, Robson Township's planning commission is very, one, one of the best that I've worked.
Who's on it now?
Tom.
Um, Tom, Tom Pye, uh, Gray Eschman, um, Henry Ramsey, uh, a couple of folks from the county, Dave Talarico. Uh, the chairman is, is an architect, Bill Meister. Uh, there's seven members, um, probably a little less than some here. Um, but it is a very, uh, well diverse group of professionals that understand development.
Oh, I think, um-
Much different than when we first moved here, I was asked to throw my hand in, where Doug Ray was on it at that time. Yep, yep, it's, it's, it's a good group. Um, you know, not important, but, but the planning commission here is, is, um, they understand development and now, now this is a data center or something, completely out of the ordinary for everybody, so, so, you know.
Yeah.
But, um, but no, they, they, they have worked together, they, you know, do a good job of vetting projects and ordinance changes and things like that. The last thing that came through there with ordinances was the explosive magazine thing for the, the Hersler Farm. The what? The, 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 they're storing explosive things on the Hersler Farm, um, on the other end of town. It's like, uh, it's, it's for blasting operations.
Oh, it's just not, it's just not a storage place to keep.
It, it's, it's where they keep the actual explosives, not the detonators, not anything else, in a safe facility away from people.
That's an arming it, huh?
That's, uh, going into the country.
The, uh, Philly Eagles are on.
It's not going to go.
Quite aware of what it is.
I don't know, it's what they did Sunday.
Play the Raiders. If they lose to the Raiders, some heads are going to roll. The two win Raiders.
I think, um, if they don't win, that hurts our chances to win the playoffs.
They need to win, I think, three games, and they statistically eliminate the house.
Things like that.
This would be the first time in a couple of twenty-seven years, there was a back, back N C East champion.
It is licensed by the ATF.
I think they have the talent to do it, it's just, I don't, things aren't coming to me.
There's some deep seated issues, it's got to be, where like, with A.J. Brown complaining, and then Jalen Hurts having the night that he had. I don't, I don't know if the scheme is hiding Jalen Hurts' deficiencies. Um, because, I mean, they were trying to sling it all over the field, and foreign interceptions, and a, and a double turnover for it. I don't, or maybe he just had a bad game, but then A.J.'s complaining, and then he's making these bad drops, and he's supposed to be, you know, he's supposed to be the guy. Saquon, he's getting like, I think his average is one yard before contact, which last year was almost three.
Yeah, I seen that, yeah.
Good.
When he would have been the first, when he threw it to eight, maybe, and it was like, like, what, forty, fifty yards or something, and it literally, yeah, touches his leg.
He just needed to like bend, like stretches.
He shouldn't have missed that, yeah. Yeah, he, that's one he shouldn't have missed.
And that touchdown, that would have won the game, um, he just got out muscled, and that's supposed to be his strong suit, he's not like wide open all the time, but he'll win contested catches, but, I don't know. I just, I think people have like PTSD from their, you know, ten undefeateds.
See me off at Thursday night, I'm sitting in cottage, taking that. I know. You know, it's still possible.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only reason I did last night, just kidding.
All right, we'll come back into regular session at nine twenty. We did discuss some personnel issues, all right, so. We have a motion?
We do.
We want to figure out how to word it? I can word it.
Word away.
I'll make a motion, we hired two full-time officers at the class four rate contingent upon the psyche eval. Is that good?
January first.
Uh, yeah, starting January first.
Yeah, after January first.
After January first.
Start, come to do it starting in January.
Starting in January, okay. Anything else? Is that good? Anything else, is that good?
I think that's good.
You made the motion.
I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-one?
Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
What time is it?
Nine twenty-one, officially on the computer and.
Twenty-one twenty-one, and what was the executive order?
Nine twenty.
Nine oh three to nine twenty.
All right, you, you got enough to do this, sir? Or you need some help?
Nope, it's Paul here, Harold.
I don't know.
I don't know.
She was sick.
Oh.
You have someone you trust?
Can someone send me the word version of that agenda?
The template.
The tem- no.
The template.
The actual, or the template of whatever she's been using, give me a word version, then it's not reinventing the wheel, I'll put it all slammed over again.
Oh, 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 we got signatures.
It's adjourned, we can't do that.
Did you use A I for that, Scott?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah, hold on.
Do I gotta sign?
Or just the secretary?
Where's your pen?
Yeah, I put my pen away. Okay, I got it.
You have one of your protector?
Need a scribing device?
Don't, don't get your backpacks stuffed.
I know. How many of you are here, Kane and?
I don't know that. I'll charge by the minute.
Back, back here.
Yep, side it, yep.
What the hell day are we on?
Eleven.
Eleven. All right, ain't that neat?
You, you can just sign, I can fill in dates.
Okay.
See everybody.
Where'd Tim go, he leave?
Tim, Tim, Tim.
He's coming back at three p.m.
Good call, all right, good. Done.
Push your microphone there.
Keep these separate for you.
Nope.
Feel like I'm redoing my mortgage. All right, mortgage documents complete, pen returned.
All right, we got all these signatures.
Oh, no, we don't, we need Tim O T.
Is that it?
We got all ours in, go on with that.